Call this meeting of the Temecula Planning Commission, March 20th to order. And we will begin with a flag salute by Commissioner Solis.
All right. Okay. Is your right hand over your heart? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and every justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Turley Trejo.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chairman Hegel.
Here. Do we have any public comments?
We have received none.
None?
None.
Okay. Good. Then I will go on to the consent calendar, so bear with me while I read this. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting or by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temecula.gov. All public participation is governed by Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings Adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. So, we have the minutes. Do we have anyone to move the minutes?
I submit.
Second.
So, we have been moved first by Turley Trejo and second by Solis. And we'll go on to business.
All.
Oh, that's right, we got to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion.
Five oh. Okay, so, go on to number two in business. Long-range application number LR 24-0028, amending Chapter 8.48, Heritage Tree Ordinance of the Temecula Municipal Code in its entirety to establish the City of Temecula Protected Tree Ordinance. And do we have a staff report? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Julie Tarrant. I'm in the Public Works Department. I'm the Principal Management Analyst. I've never been here before, so this is all new to me. So, we have a brief presentation for you. Along with myself, I have Chris Callstrand. He's with DUDEC. He was our consulting services firm representative, and he was a part of the urban forest management plan development. So, he's here to help offer some time on the presentation and also answer any questions you might have. So, let's see. How do I do this? What? I don't know how to do that.
Standby, Julie. We're still working on it.
Thank you.
There we go.
Fantastic. Okay. On July 14th, 2009, the City Council adopted the Heritage Tree Ordinance, adding Chapter 8.48 to Title VIII of the Temecula Municipal Code. The purpose of the original ordinance was to protect and preserve various oak tree species as well as other trees that are of special significance to the community, such as the California Sycamore, Bay Laurel, and Black Walnut, just to name a few. Also, to formulate and publish heritage tree preservation and protection guidelines and designate certain tree species as heritage trees. Until this time, no amendments have been made to this ordinance since its original adoption. On March 15th, 2019, the Department of Public Works applied for a grant with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, to develop an urban forest management plan. Once that application was submitted, subsequently, we were notified that we were awarded the amount of the grant that we had requested of $323,930. And then, the overall project is to include planting of 300 trees, develop a tree inventory and canopy, prepare an urban forest management plan, and ordinance and policy updates. Public Works staff and DUDEC, our consulting services firm, worked together to develop the UFMP and to incorporate it as a guiding policy document into the Temecula Municipal Code, along with minor updates to include additional tree species, the care and protection of city trees, arboriculture standards, routine maintenance, and permit review and processing. On February 27th, City Council approved a resolution to adopt the UFMP and to make a finding that that document is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, I'm going to ask Christopher to come up and with DUDEC to come up and continue the presentation on the next few slides.
Excellent. Thank you, Julie. So, what I'll talk about now is how this ordinance change is applicable and what it is applicable to. So, this will be applicable to any protected tree that is currently located between the city right-of-way and an adjacent residential, single-family or multifamily home. So, that's curb all the way to pretty much the front porch for these areas. Any development application that requires a discretionary permit, and then any tree designated as a protected tree through the city's nomination process, or designated species pursuant with Section 8.48.160A located within the general plan, open space areas with riparian areas within the Western Riverside County SHCP, corridor linkage areas, or within protected tree grove areas. So, why do we need an update to the ordinance? That's one of the main questions that always comes up. And through the UFMP process, we looked at canopy cover within the city and developed a goal to get to that because trees provide an enormous amount of benefits to, from, you know, electricity conservation to carbon sequestration, water runoff, et cetera. And so, through this process, it was determined that there is approximately 11% canopy cover wide right now in the city. So, we're at 11%. And the goal that was developed was to get to 20% over a 40-year period. And that 40-year period and 20% goal is based off, sorry, the 20% goal is based off of a regional standard and what's appropriate for the area that you all live in in Temecula. Currently, 10% of the canopy cover is provided by public trees. The other 90%, and this is the way it is in a majority of cities, it's all on private property. So, you get into this, how do we preserve larger trees that are benefiting the community the most and that those are the ones on private property? So, that's really what we're looking at, that there's this need for an ordinance to help protect those trees and not just those that are on public property. Some of the key components of this plan are particularly to protect species, particular species and sizes. So, this includes native trees with a 12-inch diameter or larger, and those would include all oak species, California Sycamore, California Bay Laurel, California Black Walnut, and Toian. This also includes all mature trees, and those are any trees with a 24-inch or greater diameter that fall within those applicable areas that I discussed earlier. Some of the key components that were evaluated through this were that native trees really provide additional benefits to the community and from biodiversity and habitat for wildlife. We know that oak trees hold this important cultural significance to a lot of different people within the area. And then, it helps maintain the natural environment of Temecula. These are the trees that were here before development occurred. And then, mature trees. These are those ones that are over 24 inches in diameter, and those are the ones that really provide the biggest environmental benefits. So, those are the ones that we want to keep in the landscape as long as we can. You can see, taking a look at the graph here, is that within the city, there's currently about 4% that fall within the mature tree category. So, we're looking at roughly, I think the numbers are about 1,200 trees that would fall within this currently. The city has relatively young tree population with around 60% being within the 7 to 18. So, eventually, we're going to have all these trees that grow into the size that would need to be protected. But right now, the city just does not have that wide breadth of larger trees that would be, that are recommended. Some more key components are the standards for approval and if a heritage tree would be removed. The first option is, can that tree be relocated if it's going to be impacted or requires removal? So, an arborist would need to come out and do an evaluation on that tree. Can you actually dig it up, move it, and would it be preserved and be able to survive that relocation process? If required, if removal is required, then for, I believe it's for oak, for the native trees, it's a three-to-one replacement ratio. Or, no, sorry, for anything onsite, if you can replant onsite, it would be three-to-one. If it has to be planted offsite, it would go to two-to-one. It would all be a similar size and species. So, it's not just saying, hey, we're going to cut down a large oak tree and we're going to plant a crepe myrtle back in the ground. It's saying, there has to be an oak, similar species that goes back in that's going to reach that same height, crown cover, and add, give that benefit back to the community over the long run. That also includes requirements for a five-year maintenance and monitoring program. So, that's just saying, hey, you cut it down, you don't just stick it back in the ground. We need to make sure this tree is going to survive in the long run. And then, if all these do not, cannot occur, then there's an in lieu fee that could potentially be paid, and that's based off of tree appraisal that would be done by an arborist. Quick summary of the changes that happened within the code. We changed the title, Chapter 8.48, from Heritage Tree Ordinance to Protected Tree Ordinance. They incorporated the UFMP to set forth city's policies and guidelines for planting, maintenance, and for care and protection of its trees. And trees on the street tree master list shall be periodically reviewed. Include additional species of oak trees, common names and Latin names for the genus of each tree species to be protected by the ordinance, so some of these were missing previously. Updated several definitions throughout the previous ordinance as well. It wasn't clear within there of what a certified arborist is, so it added, it could be somebody certified by ISA or ASCA, the American Society of Consulting Arborists. Revised the applicability, as I discussed earlier. Added specificity to align with the International Society of Arboriculture Standards, so previously, there weren't standards within there for removal of trees, pruning of trees, et cetera. So, now, it's starting to incorporate that specific language so it's consistent. Specified diameter at standard height measurement. There's, can be some ambiguity in that, but if we define it as standard height, then we're at four and a half feet above ground level. That's typically where it's taken at. We added the designation of protected trees as a valued environmental asset, ecological resource, permit requirements and exemptions. Trunk diameter and protected species of trees include oak trees. There was clarification added on pruning, routine maintenance, and determination to be made by a certified arborist, so that is now required. Added details regarding the permit review process. Those were the main changes. There were several other smaller ones throughout, mostly definitions. And then, I'll hand this back over to Julie to wrap it up.
Okay, there was a SEQA determination, so, per the California Environmental Quality Act, planning staff reviewed the ordinance to see if it was exempt, and it has been determined to be exempt from the SEQA compliance pursuant to those sections 15378B5 and 15061B3. And our recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 8.48 of the Temecula Municipal Code. That's the conclusion of our presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll start down here with questions.
Yeah, thank you. So, kind of a combination question here. Totally understand the importance of preserving the trees and the benefits that it provide, but we're also constantly faced with limitations on water usage. And then, one of the real big things right now is fire hardening requirements, especially around residential and multifamily, and there's some of those developments going on. How does this ordinance, are those even tied together at all? Because it seems like if we're in protecting something, but if a homeowner then is required to remove a tree that's adjacent to their property for fire hardening purposes, who wins there?
So, I believe there are exemptions within there, within this document for if there's, you know, if it's required for fire purposes, or if there's hazard related to, you know, if it's a risk to the community, then that's an applicable reason for removal of these trees. And so, those are the other drivers behind how you could remove one of the trees, and maybe there wouldn't be, you know, replacement required, or it would need to fall within those lines.
Okay. And I just know, especially on the real estate side of things, you know, there's either requirements or incentives to clear out some of the trees and brush and stuff that's around the property. So, I just want to make sure this doesn't put a burden on a homeowner that then has to face higher costs somewhere else because we're trying to protect a tree somewhere. So, as long as there's an exemption there, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Hello. And something happened to my chair, so I'm really short. I'm shorter than normal. I like at the bottom. I'm not sure what just happened, but, okay, so this is probably a question for the consultant, but there was on one of the slides, it was onsite was three-to-one, offsite two-to-one?
Correct.
So, the way I understand it is if there was a tree relocation, you needed to move a tree, you would plant three trees in place of that one tree onsite?
No, so, the options are, if a tree is approved, if a heritage, sorry, if a tree is approved for removal, there's, we're looking at five potential options for mitigation of that tree that's removed. So, the first option is tree relocation, and that could be on, the first option is to move it somewhere onsite. So, digging the tree up, moving it, you know, to the corner of the property, somewhere like that. If tree relocation is not feasible, then the next option is to plant onsite, so on the property that the tree is being removed from at a three-to-one ratio.
Meaning?
So, three, I need to look at the numbers again. I believe it's three 24-inch box trees for each, for every tree that's removed.
For each tree that's replaced.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, if we've gone through the whole planning process and then it looks at, say, you know what, there's just not enough room, then it can go to a two-to-one replacement ratio. So, for every tree removed, it would be two. That would go to an offsite location, and that would be completed in conjunction with working with the city to identify some areas. So, maybe there's an area within a park that could house it or within the public right-of-way.
Okay.
So, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And then, so, this wasn't really talked about. I don't know, also, kind of, a different, I guess, line of thinking than Adam, but, like, building permits. Like, if someone's wanting to come in and build, right, a developer, and there is a tree on there that is historically, needs to be preserved, what's that process? What does that process look like?
Hopefully, somebody from the city can work through this. I've actually worked on projects within the City of Temecula where there's heritage trees, oak trees onsite. And the way that it's historically been done is an arborist comes out, takes a look at that tree, does an evaluation on the overall health, structure, can it be saved, can it not be saved, and then provide a recommendation on whether that can or cannot happen. Typically, at that point, that's presented to, say, the planning department, and the planning department will then review it and say, you know what, maybe you can move this sidewalk three feet this direction, this tree can be saved. Take another look at it and see if you can design around this tree. Because we have this ordinance, and we understand that these mature trees are an important asset to our community. So, there's these options to look at, and if it kicks back and says, you know what, it's just not feasible, then I would assume that there's, then that's the mechanism. Okay, you've done everything you can, now we go to, the tree can be removed, and then one of these mitigation options. So, if you're a developer and you need to cut down five of these, then you can come in and say, you know what, you got to plant 15 on your property. If you can't fit all 15 of those replacements on your property, then 10 need to go somewhere offsite, you work with the city. So, that's my basic, you know, 10,000-foot understanding of how the process would work.
And then, you still have those two categories, native and mature, that we're working with as far as protecting.
Yeah. So, you have the native ones that are at a smaller diameter, and then, mature trees is anything over 24 inches in diameter.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
We'll go down to Commissioner Solis. We're going to save our part range here till last here.
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, so, from the current ordinance now to what we are revising, proposing to revise, is the, trying to include more trees to be protected?
Yes, there has been additional species.
So, there's been additional species, and in addition, you also put that any tree with a 24-inch, so it could be a fruit tree, will be protected?
I need to double-check, and I think there are some exemptions within this. I wish I had that for you right now, but there's sometimes where I think it's fruits, fruit trees or palms are not included. But I would need to confirm that and get back to you on it.
I think you're correct.
Okay. And then, I think my next question is, so, you spoke about the new change also to the replacement would be from currently 24-inch, it's always been 24-inch, or are you changing that? Like, the replacement ratio, the minimum tree replacement gallon size?
I am not aware off the top of my head of what it currently was. Sorry, I'm stepping in for a cohort this evening who became unavailable last minute, so we could certainly get that information for you and get that back to you. Or perhaps somebody else is aware of the current ordinance.
I think you mentioned 24-inch box, so I would like to see it maybe to 36-inch box? If there was a replacement, to not plant such a little tree?
Yeah, I think one piece to consider is when you start looking at putting larger trees back in the ground, there's actually a higher success rate of putting smaller trees in the ground. It's taking something that's younger, and it will in time actually catch up to a larger tree, to say, a 36-inch box. So, oftentimes, I actually recommend putting a 15-inch or 15-gallon tree because it's going to catch up to that 24-inch box within a year or two in reality of size. Because it's just, the best, the analogy that I always take is taking somebody who has not been in an environment for a long time to somebody who is used to one type of environment. And somebody who has not been in an environment is much more adept to change than an older tree. And so, it goes to trees that way as well. So, I think planting younger or smaller size, it's going to catch up in time. But, I mean, you can do 36 as well, but some cities do that. That's the reason why smaller trees are often planted. People say, oh, there's small trees going back for this big tree. Well, all trees start as small trees and get big. So, it's just, it's better arboriculture.
If we can recommend 36-inch, because when they get planted, they're already big. They're not too big, where people can still plant them easily. Takes four people to plant a 36-inch box tree. A 24-inch, sometime with the climate here, I feel that it might not survive because it's very extreme cold, like right now, it gets really, really cold, and then during the summer, it gets really, really hot.
Yeah.
So, I think a 24-inch box, a 36-inch box would be bigger. I don't know if we can make that recommendation. And also, do we have a master tree planting plan? Like, where it has, like, maybe this street should be this type of tree, on this street it should be this type of tree?
I think, Matt, can you speak to that from planning?
Yeah, it depends on the specific plan. So, the uptown specific plan has very specific street trees, and a lot of the specific plans have that as well.
And then, my last question is, on page, oh, this doesn't have pages, but, on the designation of protected trees, there's on H, so do property owners now have to register trees if they're protected on their property and also provide some type of covenant and record on their property? Is that a new change to the code?
No, it does not include any registration of a protected tree. It just needs to be identified, and if it is...
Can you speak into the mic so that it's easier to hear you? Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. There isn't any provisions in the ordinance about a requirement for a certificate of, you know, to protect it. It really is an assessment based on the development, planning's assessment, certified tree arborist's assessment of the maturity of the tree, whether it falls into a protected tree or not. But there's no certification or recordation of that on the property itself.
So, there's a section...
So, there is a section that talks about H, says, if a tree is designated as a protected tree under Section 8.48.16D2, the city shall pay the recordation fees. So, then, if we go to D2, it talks about city-initiated nominations. So, when the city designates any tree and the city's a protected tree, there's this nomination process, and then, under that provisions, it gets recorded.
Okay. I apologize.
It's okay. That's the question I said, was this, who nominates and who, except for example, if a property owner had a tree, how does that get nominated? Do they propose it, or does the city go out and do a survey and say, well, these are all the protected trees, then now they all have to write a covenant on their property?
So, it would be pursuant to a notice public hearing, so the applicant would have, the property owner would have an opportunity to come and be heard when there's this city-initiated process. And it's only going to be approved if the decision-maker determines that the tree should be preserved and protected due to its age, size, rarity, location, or appearance, or the tree is determined to be historically significant. So, those are the criteria for having this city-nominated process, which is the only type of tree that ultimately has the recordation on file. If it's just your run-of-the-mill tree, then you wouldn't go through this process.
Okay. My last question, sorry if I saw any questions. Is there, what's the fine when someone removes a protected tree?
So, did you, okay, just checking. It says that the violations are subject to the same penalty... It says that the violations are subject to the same penalties, um, in, uh, chapter one point one six. And I think that's our standard administrative penalties and I can pull that up right now. I think it's like a hundred and two hundred, but I'll, I'll double check and get right back to you.
Can we change it to?
It's fifty, then one fifty, then two fifty.
Can we, can we put like five thousand as a fine?
We're limited in, in, in the types of fines that can be imposed, um, just pursuant to state law. So usually there's like a thousand is kind of the max that typically comes into play. There are some circumstances in which you may potentially be able to exceed that, but just generally in terms of your regular fines and there is kind of this step category.
Yeah. I know the, um, city of Pasadena and city of Alani and city, like if you're Tree City USA, the fine is about five thousand dollars to move a protected tree. And then also it's a thousand dollar per tree in addition. And then also you have to plant a thirty-six inch box per, three per everyone that you remove without a permit. And that's in their tree ordinances. I don't know if that's something that we can also adopt or we can, for Tree City, we're Tree City USA, right?
Yes, we are.
That's something we can look at?
I mean, I think if it's part of the recommendation, we could certainly look into that if it's part of the planning commission's recommendation to the council.
I just feel that if we're really gonna protect these trees, I feel like there should be like a, a strict, um, code to maybe show the importance of trees. So it should be a big fine if they do remove them and also replace them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Watts.
Well, I'm gonna go in the completely opposite direction of my colleague over here. You can kill a bald eagle, you could kill an endangered gray whale and your fine would be ten thousand dollars for each thing. So putting a tree, in some instances, it may be a really crappy tree, in that same category is absurd, in my opinion. Just my opinion. So I'm a homeowner in Temecula. I own a house and I have a tree in my backyard that I wanna move or I wanna cut down. What process do I go through to do that with the city? There's fourteen pages in this proposed ordinance and there's no explanation on what we're gonna do?
No, I, I, my understanding is that a tree removal permit would need to be, that's the way it's currently set up within the city. If you're removing an oak tree as a heritage tree.
Not an oak tree, I didn't say an oak tree.
I'm saying the existing path that's used is for a permit to be submitted. So I would assume that it would be a permit process that would need to be implemented within the city if somebody wanted to remove a tree that's greater than twenty-four inches or one of the oak trees or native trees.
So that would, and that would result in increased cost to the planning department to administer that program. Is that correct?
So.
The, the program is this in the current ordinance. And the city attorney's got the section in, in front of her, so she's gonna-
So it's-
If I just have a tree in my backyard and I-
I just wanna make clear too, I think the one thing that we're talking about here is this is a, this is an amendment to an existing ordinance. So that, that not everything is brand new and the requirement to get a permit to remove what used to be called a heritage, heritage tree, now called a protected tree, existed since the adoption of the original ordinance. So that existed and we'll go ahead and explain that now.
So the distinction then is heritage tree was specific, correct?
The, the name of the ordinance was Heritage Tree Ordinance.
But was that heritage tree defined in that ordinance as a heritage tree?
Yes.
It was defined as heritage tree, but some of the definitions are, are very similar in terms of the type of trees that were designated. And I can go back and go through that with, for you if you'd like. But I'm gonna first address, did you want me to address the permit process? So under section eight point four eight point two one zero, the new proposed section, it provides that no person shall cut, remove or relocate a protected tree or encroach into the protected zone of any protected tree without first obtaining a protected tree removal or relocation permit. So that's step one. And then there's, um, you know, exceptions to when they don't, you don't need to go through that process. And then there's eight point four eight point two two zero that talks about the application and review process that needs to be followed. So if it's less than, it's five or fewer trees on a single parcel, the director is the one who makes that determination. That can then be appealed to the city count, I'm sorry, to the planning commission. Um, and the planning commission reviews any other, uh, protected tree removal or relocation permit that isn't reviewed by the director. So anything essentially five or over is, comes to the planning commission for consideration.
Do, do we have statistics on how many trees have been included in that process you just described? Say in the last, I don't know, two years?
To my knowledge, working here at the city, we've never had a permit for this.
Okay. And, and real quickly, how many pages was the previous or the existing ordinance that we're trying to amend?
I don't know how to quantify that.
Yeah, we, we have it online, so it's just a continuous scroll. I, I don't know if we can tell you that.
How thick is the, uh, the code like this? Cause if every, every ordinance is fourteen pages, my gosh, it must be a big code. Anyhow, um, are eucalyptus trees considered protected trees if they're twenty-five inches in DBH?
Twenty-four and yes, if you're over that threshold.
So that would be a protected tree, an eucalyptus tree. Not native.
Mature trees over twenty-four inches in diameter are considered protected.
No, there's no idea how many eucalyptus trees we have in the city, I'm sure. Do we have an inventory on that?
There would have been captured within the public right of way. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now.
There's a lot in the private property, not in public. Well, those are fire hazards. They're dangerous hazard. They're, they're dirty messy trees. I can't imagine someone, just because it's a big tree, uh, is a benefit. Cause eucalyptus trees, and I can speak from personal experience if you'd care to ever hear it, but, uh, they're very dangerous. They're very messy. They're very ugly. They're not native. If we're just protecting them under the guise of climate protection, then I think we need to review that. I really do. That's, uh, crazy. There's so many eucalyptus trees in this town that were originally put in by the Bayle Ranch people. So there's probably some historical tie in there. I can't believe where, but there could be. Okay. So an arborist has to come and check your tree out and, uh, basically agree with your desire to take it out for whatever reason. Is that the way it would work?
That's my understanding, yes.
So if you were afraid the tree was gonna drop a branch and kill your kid and that arborist didn't agree with that, you couldn't do anything about the tree in your yard?
Uh, the arborist would need to go through a tree risk assessment and that would determine if there was a risk associated with that tree.
And would it be safe to say that, um, different arborists might have different tolerances for what would be a problem and what wouldn't be?
Correct, but that is, uh, tree risk within the industry is a standardized process and requires a qualification and a process to go through. So I would assume that the city would require that that individual be tree risk assessment qualified so that the risk that may or may not be associated with that will come in relatively same.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, how much of this is driven? Or what, what's driving this particular piece of ordinance that's gonna go in? Why is it so detailed and, and what's behind, uh, the reason for such specificity, specificity in some areas and zero in others?
As I had shown before, the, this is primarily driven by the climate adaption policy. And so to increase the city's can, overall canopy cover by approximately ten percent over the next forty years, the best way to do that is through protection of mature trees.
I'm, I'm guessing that could be debated. And, uh, the question that my colleague on my left, Fernando, asked on a thirty-six inch tree, what's a thirty-six inch tree cost to buy, just to buy, not put in the ground? Let's say a sycamore.
You're probably looking at, I need to look at numbers, but you're probably about twelve hundred dollars.
And then insta, and then actually digging a hole and planting it, what would that be in addition to that?
Yeah, uh, going labor rate, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know off the top of my head. You're probably looking at probably fifteen hundred installed, all said and done.
I think that's three hundred.
For a, for a thirty-six inch box tree, about fifteen hundred dollars per tree.
From buying it and putting it in the ground?
No, that's just-
Yeah.
Just the acquisition of it. So putting it in the ground, who knows how much more that would be? So every, every resident, every homeowner, every person in Temecula that owns property would have to go through this process and, and look at a, probably a five thousand minimum investment just to replace a tree that's in the backyard that may be just a crummy old eucalyptus tree?
It would be at the determination of the arborist that evaluated that tree if it is quote unquote.
If he was allowed to take it out.
And that would be the evaluation process that they would go through.
Now what kind of appeals, you said, would it go to the planning commission if, if some arborist said, you're not taking the tree out?
It actually goes to the director of community development. So to one of your earlier questions, if the tree posed a threat to life, safety issues, like the arborist makes a recommendation to the city, the city can override the arborist if they believe that there is truly a health and safety issue. The approvals process is administrative. So we're talking about appeals to this and appeals to that. It's a, it's intended to be administrative, which is the lowest level of review, the cheapest level of review and the quickest level of review. So that's to that question right there.
Uh, does this ordinance have any ability to, uh, or, or does it address the fact that the city significant, or faces significant risk from trees that are a danger? Particularly in public use areas such as parks, sidewalks, that type of thing. Does this require any sort of a regular inspection program on those trees that are on public property that could pose danger in the event of a failure, uh, to the public?
The city currently maintains an active tree inventory and a tree maintenance program. And through that, the trees are routinely maintained and evaluated. So when a, when the city's tree maintenance contractor would come through the city, every time they look at a tree or touch a tree, that is an evaluation that's being done on that tree for pruning purposes. And then in piece of that is also the development of the UFMP to come up with an outline and a program so that the city can have these programs in place to routinely inspect the trees. And part of it was the development of a, a tree inventory so they know what they have, they know what species are out there, they know which ones are at a higher risk. And then know which ones that they need to look at or prune at different frequencies. So yes, there are potential ways for the city to go about that and that's why this was all created.
Okay. Well, this is amazing. And to me, I know a lot of people are gonna disagree, but this is government out of control on this kind of stuff. And I'm guessing that the legislation, uh, that came from the state and you said it's tied to the climate agenda. A lot of this in here probably came from the legislation that was passed, I'm guessing, but I, it doesn't matter. It's not, it's not relevant. It just, uh, it smacks of taking away people's rights, um, their concerns and it's putting a burden on them. It's putting a cost burden on them. You're putting in the hands of a, of a, excuse me, uh, Luke, but a bureaucrat. A government bureaucrat's gonna decide whether it's good or not. And beyond that, appeals to a body like this, well, what other rights does a homeowner or person have on something like that? And do you want them coming into your backyard and checking every tree you got? Uh, and who knows what else? I mean, it's just one more step. Now, I know not everybody agrees with me and that, that's fine. But I think it's important, I think there's a lot of people in this town that would feel the same way. And unfortunately, as you can see, it's not driving a lot of interest. There's not a lot of people here. I appreciate the work you've done and I'm not trying to, um, denigrate that or in any way, um, you know, cast any dispersion on your work or anything of that nature. My problem is more with the root of the problem, which is the whole, uh, driven process, so. Just, just one final point. And the reason I'm worried about the safety, because I walk a lot and I, and I've had experience with trees that have failed. And I've had an experience with, with a example of one that fell on people and the state had to pay ten million dollars to the survivor. And they were told, you should have known this tree was unsafe. And, uh, I'd say we conservatively had maybe twenty thousand trees in the park at the time. And it was hard to get someone to come and inspect twenty thousand trees. So anyhow, there's a lot in here that I see holes, holes in. And I don't know if you can patch them up or you want to patch them up. And once again, I'm just gonna take this opportunity to voice my opinion on it. Nobody has to agree with that or, but I felt that those points need to be brought up. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted, if, it's okay if I could address Fernando with one of his questions.
Go ahead, yep.
My computer to, to look at it. And so, um, we're, I'm looking through the full draft of the ordinance and the changes. And what it says for the offsite planting is that it says offsite planting of two forty-eight inch box trees. So actually it's recommended to go actually larger for the offsite. It doesn't specify on, for the onsite here. So, but at least for offsite, they would be larger trees at forty-eight inch.
Is, is offsite for like the public right of way? Is that what offsite is?
Those would be, uh, whenever they couldn't fit it on property. So maybe there's, you know, adjacent property that it could be planted on or within the public right of way or within parks, things along those lines. Right.
Okay.
So, but, uh, it does say forty-eight inch box, so larger ones.
So it's probably like onsite that I would recommend a change, but thank you.
Okay. I'm trying to understand what this ordinance applies to and what, and if anything it doesn't apply to. So this applies to not only city property, it applies to private property, a homeowner's property, the entire property. Is that correct?
For the native trees.
For the native trees.
For native trees is, I, I believe that's correct. It's any native tree.
Right.
But then it's, the applicability is, is between, as we say here, any protected tree that is located between the city right of way and the adjacent residential, single family or multifamily home. So that's basically to the front of the house. It doesn't go to the back of the house, it doesn't go into the side of the house unless there's a street that's on, so, say you're a corner lot, then it might hit two sides. So it's, it's from this, the, the, the private portion, it would be anything that's not maintained by the city currently. The city maintains, from my understanding, trees in people's front yards as it stands because of the, the way the right of way works within the city. But it's any, it's that other gap that goes to basically the front doorstep that, that would be, but not back, people's backyards or anything like that.
So if there was a tree that's forty-nine inches in diameter and it's in the backyard, that would or would, that would not apply then?
Yeah, the, based on the applicability that we define here, it's up to that front, so not backyards.
If it was a protected oak tree in their backyard, then it would apply.
I would need to con, to check on that. I think based on my reading of this is that no, it's just to that front. It's just in the front.
Just, okay.
It's not the backyard.
Homeowners associations. I would gather that this would apply to, um, property that the homeowner association owned in some fashion.
We were conferring about something. I'm sorry, what was the question?
So, um, I live in a neighborhood that has a very large, uh, property owned by the homeowner's association. We've got lots of trees. We've got lots of oak trees, big oak trees that are a hundred to two hundred years old. And I'm wondering, based upon what was just said, what, what would apply to them? Would they, would only the trees that are between the right of way and say the first twenty feet or whatever?
The adjacent residential, single family or multifamily home, there's also any development application that requires a discretionary permit. That also comes into play. Any tree that was designated as a protected tree through that nomination process that we talked about earlier. And then, um, designated species pursuant to a specific section located within general plan open space areas, within riparian areas, within Western Riverside County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan, important wildlife corridor linkage areas or within protected tree grove areas. So to answer your question for the HOA, I guess it would depend on whether any of that area was lo, identified as a general plan open space. any of that area was identified as a general plan, open space area, then potentially it would apply to those areas. But I, I mean, I would not know.
So we have many, many oak trees that are beautiful, big oak trees. Would they be, would, can they be nominated to be protected?
Yeah, I think they could certainly be nominated if, if you go through the city nomination process and then whether or not they actually get the protected status would, you know, be a discretionary approval.
Okay, because I would say we're taking down ten to twenty large, hundred-year-old plus oak trees every year. Some may because they're diseased, some, you know, there are probably a variety of different reasons. Yet, as Gary's mentioned, we've got trees that are ugly, that are soaking up water like crazy. And I've got one next to my house that is pretty hazardous. We've had branches come down, actually almost hit somebody. That thing stays up there. They don't take that down. And was curious if, I'm not sure how we would go through a homeowners' association to apply for protection of certain trees, but that would be something I would be interested in doing.
So there's two different processes. If you look at eight point four eight one six zero D, it talks about the designation of protected trees through the nomination process. And there is a public initiation nomination process. And so that has to happen with the consent of the property owner. And then there's certain criteria. Alternatively, there is the city nominated process. So those are the two different processes for having a tree nominated to, to be protected.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion? Anybody have anything else to add or?
I think it's been enlightening, all that has been said. I, I kind of, I'm, I love trees and I love gardening and all of that, so this is. So from what you said about the tree being twenty-four inches as opposed to thirty-six inches made total sense to me. I would not agree with recommending for a bigger size on that. I think that makes a lot of sense. As far as the fines go, also, I would not agree with that. And then, you know, as far as this whole ordinance and the amendment to it, I guess we've never really seen this ordinance here, feels like.
The original, but that was, you know.
A long time ago.
Quite, two thousand nine.
Yeah, so before my time. So, yeah, this is all interesting and, and I'm also hearing that we haven't had a lot of people wanting to remove their trees.
I mean, none to, Stuart here, he's been here even longer than I have.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, you know, why, I, I don't know. So I, I'm just wondering why the need for the amendment and, and all of this, I, I don't know. Just wondering about that. That's kind of my question. So, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I looked and I probably missed it, but I didn't see what the justification was why we needed to amend one, the old one with this new one. But that being said, maybe it's in there. I don't remember. Go ahead, Julie.
I can speak to that. With the development of the UFMP, it was part of the requirement of the grant that we re, revise and update policies and ordinances in accordance with that UFMP and incorporate some of that criteria into our current ordinance. So the heritage tree ordinance was comprehensive all in and of itself. These are minor changes to them, to the original. It does speak to additional species, like we said. It does speak to how a protected tree is identified, whether that's the size, maturity, location, and how it's, how it's assessed by a certified arborist for that benef, you know, whether it is a safety hazard, if it's a fire hazard. Those things I'm sure are going to be, take precedence over saving a tree, simply because of its size. So it, it really is just, just to kind of update everything so that the UFMP can be our formal guidebook, if you will. And the ordinance is updated to include some of those new, more current things.
Okay. My, my takeaway is it changed so much because the grant required it.
Yes, it is a requirement. In fact, we need to submit the adopted ordinance or a, a minute action from city council to show that we have adopted the ordinance changes in order to complete the project closeout process and submit our final invoice and get our reimbursement of the three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. And if we don't, Attorney General will probably come down and sue us because we're causing such an enormous cog in the wheel. But enough of the editorializing. Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of holes in this that could be patched up and I'm going to have a hard time agreeing with it. A lot of the points I brought up, and I think there's a million more I could as well, that need to be addressed before I could support that. And I know I'm probably an outlier, but I just feel like I have to be honest with y'all. So, so I am. So that's my thinking. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I, I was going back through our agenda report on page three, which I, I agree, there's a lot of questions. And I think if this was the first time here in the ordinance, we'd probably have a lot of the questions. My understanding is that what we would be voting on tonight is adopting these amendments that are listed on page three. And I don't see anything in there that has come up under question tonight with some of the issues within the ordinance in there. So I just kind of wanted to point that out. I mean, that's not for me to decide. That's for everybody here. But I think some of the concerns about what the ordinance is trying to accomplish and doing and some of the holes that you're talking about, that's already the ordinance that's in there from what I can see. And if I'm wrong, maybe someone can correct me. But the staff recommendation that I see before us is basically amending it with these, which really kind of cleans up some language and some, and some definitions. My only question on those is in reading through the ordinance, and, and this is probably more a question for staff or maybe Montesela, is fire hardening is just such a big thing. And I just didn't see where that would, that exemption would apply within there. And if it, if it's in there and everyone's comfortable with it being in there and maybe point that out, then, then I'm good with that. If it's not, or if it would need to be spelled out, if we are making a potential amendment to the ordinance, I would maybe want to look for some kind of clarification that if some sort of tree removal is a requirement because of fire hardening rules, that that would apply. But other than that, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Commissioner Watts. But I think a lot of the, the questions that we've all had here are not what's before us tonight to vote on, if I'm understanding what's presented by staff correctly.
So.
Go ahead.
So I don't recall seeing fire prevention specifically, but I will tell you that if you look at section eight point four eight point two three zero Standards of Approval, A says that an application for a protected tree removal or relocation permit may be approved only if the director finds and determines that the requested cutting, removal, relocation, or encroachment is necessary to, and then if you look at two, protect life or property from danger posed by the protected tree that cannot be reduced or eliminated by use of reasonable prevention, preservation, and/or preventative procedures and practices. So I think it would fall under that because if you're removing for fire hazard purposes, then I, I would assume it would fall under A two. But you're right, it's not, I have not seen a section where it's specifically spelled out.
And I, I know we're doing this, you know, to be on top of it and be ahead, but clearly there's not a line long of applicants coming through for, for tree removal. I, I understand that. I just want to make sure that if we, if we are kind of opening up Pandora's Box and looking at this, if someone is presented with, hey, I'm required to do this because of state fire hardening rules, that that's, would be a non-questionable approval.
I, I think the, it's the entire ordinance that is here to be approved. Is that correct?
That's correct. So it's a brand-new ordinance. We are, these are new sections that are being approved.
So, I mean, without having sat down and actually compared it with the old one, there may be things that are in the old one that are in this, but this is what we have to deal with, so. I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the portion that is related to native trees being protected. I, I love that part of it. What I agree with Commissioner Watts is that to protect any tree that's over forty-eight inches in diameter just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, a lot of those trees are, they're, they're not native trees. They, you know, I think they should be taken down when they can be taken down. I'd like to see a eucalyptus being taken down and replaced with an oak tree rather than another eucalyptus tree. They, you know, they suck up water like crazy and, you know, the way a lot of them grow, there's a lot of danger too, branches coming down. They do make a mess. I've got, like I said, I have a big one next to my house that absolutely makes a disastrous mess and has lots of branches that have come down right on a path that people walk on. So I, you know, I feel very conflicted by this.
Comments?
Go ahead.
Final comments? Well, I, I believe the ordinance is great. And if we are trying to protect trees, this is the right path to protect the trees. And in addition to that, if there isn't hard rules to protect these trees, then there's really, there's no teeth in ordinance to protect a tree. So it's very easy for someone to just cut a tree and say, hey, I'll pay a hundred dollars. It doesn't matter. Well, I'd rather pay to remove the, I mean, I'd rather get the fine than to actually go through the whole process and everything, so.
One, in the existing ordinance, there, there is a section under, let me pull this up, that's violations and enforcement. And within the, the, under section eight point four eight point three two zero is restitution. And it comes down to the director within that, but there's the built-in ability within that to, to go through a tree appraisal process. So there, there's, there are mechanisms within the existing ordinance as it stands for restitution, for pursuing if a tree gets cut down, if somebody does and goes that, that way. So what, what we're trying to focus on here today is, is these, you know, few changes that have been made, but a lot of these things that are being touched on, because this hasn't, this full ordinance hasn't been before everybody beforehand. So there's a lot of pieces within the existing that, that are there that I believe may not have been reviewed by everybody. But the, the restitution process does exist for getting, you know, like a tree appraisal.
Well, that would be in, in, I would say in addition to the removal of that tree without a permit. That would be a five thousand dollar fine plus whatever the evaluation of the tree would be. That's what my recommendation is. If we are changing the code now and then we are trying to protect the trees, I feel that some type of, you could put teeth on the code would, would be, right now would be the appropriate time to put that. And, and I'm not doing anything that other cities aren't doing. I'm just looking at the big cities that protect trees like Pasadena, Claremont. You know, those tree, those, those cities that do have a lot of trees, you know, they have these type of language in there. So it's not, not something different that other cities aren't doing. But overall, the ordinance would not put the community in danger, I think. You know, there is a process to remove a tree and people could just apply and it doesn't have to come before us. It could come before staff. And, you know, someone really looks at a tree. So if a tree is in danger, then I believe there is a proper procedure to remove the tree. And I, and I believe that the city wouldn't be opposed to life and safety. So if someone would apply and the city says, hey, you know, this tree is in danger. And I'll give you an example. My, when I moved in, there was three trees that are, that were really big, but they weren't alive. So the city did come down. They evaluated the trees and they removed them because they, they were a hazard at that time. But if it's a live tree and it's perfectly healthy, then I, I think we should protect it. If we have this type of section of the code and we are Tree City USA, you know, to protect these trees. But overall, I, I believe the, the ordinance, the update, I agree with it. And that's it. The only recommendation I would change would be to do a, a replacement for a forty-eight inch box. If we would be replacing it, I mean, I'm sorry, thirty-six inch box for replacement. And also the fine to be more, to be five thousand dollars in addition to the evaluation of the tree that was removed without a permit. And this is only when trees are removed without a permit. But if they go with the procedure, then there wouldn't be a fine.
Maricela, correct me on this, but we're observing, we're considering the revised ordinance, correct?
Correct.
All the changes that my colleague, Commissioner Solis, has suggested would have to be made in a motion added to the, is that right?
Correct.
So I just wanted to remind you, you're free to make a motion to all of those things, including, and see how far they get.
Can I, can I make one quick comment, Mr. Chair? Comment, maybe a recommendation. We have a lot going on here. There's a lot of questions. Seems like a lot of unanswered questions, things that we need to work through. Frankly, I don't think I'm comfortable with moving this forward at this time. And I would suggest, just to throw it out there, that maybe we continue this. And we go back and we address each one of these questions one by one, return and, and deal with that, with it that way.
That's what I was going to suggest, yeah. One of the things I would like to see is for a tree that's removed, that it's replaced not by a like, necessarily a like tree or the same tree, but replaced by a native tree. So that we, you know, I, I, I think we do want as much tree cover as we can, but I think there's a certain type of tree cover that we want that is more valuable to us than, than other trees. And the city didn't control the original planting of the tree. And we shouldn't be requiring the same tree be planted if it really isn't a desirable tree to be there in the first place, so.
Can I make a motion to continue the item? So maybe.
Second.
A second.
Okay, we have a first by Turley Trejo and a second by Solis. Oh, I'm sorry, Adam, was it?
Yeah, it was Adam.
Okay, sorry. So we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, so five oh to send this back and we'll work through all of the, the issues.
And I have one more suggestion for considering. Is that the city owns lots of land and maybe we need to incorporate a tree planting program within our capital improvement program, Jennifer. I didn't, I don't know if that exists or not, and I don't know if it's there, but that's certainly alternative. We have two lots right across the street. We have lots all over the place that are barren and they're used by cars. So I'm sure we could figure out a way to find some kind of a tree planting that would help our end of it. As the statistics you pointed out earlier, most of it's on private land that we're expecting to improve over the years. So we could take a, a jump and, and kickstart that by implementing on the public land that we have a program that states, or at least accomplishes what the goal is, is trying to set out. So just a suggestion.
I think, doesn't the grant require three hundred trees or two hundred trees to be planted?
We did plant three hundred trees.
Oh, we did plant.
A, a lot of our park areas to increase the canopy. So that's been done with species that were approved and are, they're not eucalyptus.
And that, the cost of planting those trees was from the, paid for by the grant.
Yes, we had volunteers that came out and helped plant. We had an Arbor Day planting all under the guise of the grant.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you.
You spending the time with us and putting up with us.
That's what we're here for. Remember, that's what we're here for.
Okay, so let's go on. So business number three. Receive presentation for the Quality of Life Master Plan website and provide general recommendations regarding the same. Long-range plan number LR twenty-one dash zero zero two one. And you have our attention. And you have our attention.
Hi, good evening. Tonight I'm going to be presenting the Quality of Life Master Plan website. So you've seen the adopted document by now, but we have recently launched a website, so we'd like to show it off a little bit. But just some background first, the Q L M P twenty forty, it's a visionary document, expresses aspirations, ideals and strategic priorities of the city and community. And this was recently adopted in November of twenty twenty-two. There are seven core values identified in the Q L M P document. Each core value contributes to the overall quality of life. City departments maintain performance indicators based on these core values. And all capital improvement projects are evaluated for their adherence to the core values. And this is used during the budget process as well. So the top shows a little snippet from the website, circled in red is each core value. And when you click on that on the website, it takes you to each page, each core values page. A little more on the website, so it's a, a digital and interactive version of the document. Each core value, as I said, has its own designated webpage. That includes the indicators measuring the city's progress, its goals and objectives, as well as the city's accomplishments. There's also a designated citizens twenty-year priority timeline, just as you see it in the document. And the city will use this website as a resource to see what we've done, what we're doing and where we're going. So measuring our progress. Without getting too much into it, we have a link here at the top as well as in the staff report. So figured we'd love for you all to flip through it if you haven't already, see how well it navigates. And it's really an identical version of the document, just in live format with same photos, same information, just making it a different format. So this concludes my presentation, very brief, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Great, thank you, Katie. Gary?
I don't have any questions.
Just, just one, thanks for that. And I want to say good job putting it on the app, because I know more people are going to the app and the app points straight to the same website, everything looks the same, which is really cool. The only thing, and I honestly don't know if this would be particularly used or not, but the, the link for contact goes straight back to the city's contact page. That doesn't have any indication of if you wanted more information or questions or information on something covered within the, in that master plan.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know if we have a Q L M P at Temecula C A dot gov at website or email address or something like that, but it just kind of circles back. And when you go to there, there's nothing really to say, I want more information on this.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll take a look at it. I think the original intent was to direct everyone to the city app to, it would go through the, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, it would go through the city app to then put in any requests. But I don't, I haven't verified the link, so let me check that for you.
The city app has the same thing, but as far as the categories for how you want to contact. So.
Okay.
Say I'm reading this and I'm looking at, you know, parks and rec and I thought, oh, I like what I see there, but I'm hoping to get a question or more information. When I go contact, then I have to go back to non-emergency, potholes, code enforcement. Like, there's nothing specific for this.
For the eucalyptus, okay.
Maybe there'd be a way to direct people to get information on that in particular.
Sure, we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think my question was similar. If there were people that had feedback, including myself, on the website itself, how would we give that feedback?
So I think on the original website, we were, before this website was launched, we just had a page on our existing Temecula C A dot gov webpage. And there originally was a way to contact, I think it was Matt directly. But since this launch of the new website, I think we were going to establish a better way to do that. So maybe looking at something similar to having just a designated spot on the Civic app. And we can maybe do something like that instead of Matt getting bombarded with.
Yeah, no, this is good feedback. What we can do is take a look at how the city app works for providing feedback or answering questions. And then we can take a look at the website itself. So we'll, we'll evaluate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. The website will provide where we're at with meeting goals and everything. How often are we going to update?
Yeah, good question. So we've discussed updating it at least annually. So towards the end of the year, we usually do some sort of update through the city manager's office on what our projects and the progress on our projects that year. So the intent was to have some sort of template that we can have each department update on where they're at in those projects and then relay that over to the website. So I think with this launching towards the end of the year, where this will be our first full year, so probably towards the end of this year, you'll see some sort of update on the indicators and the progress.
Okay, good. What I would suggest is to make sure that we date the, the information that is, you know, where we've progressed to. So if it's through, you know, the end of twenty twenty-three that we make that statement so that people know where we're really at as of what time. Because I mean, if we're nine months off and somebody may say, well, you know, I think we've, I think we've gone further than that. You know, they can see that it's a, as of a certain date, so.
Okay, noted.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so that's a receiving file. And number four, receive budget and engagement session, provide general recommendations regarding the same. And we're sorry we made you wait so long.
All right, well, that's coming up. Good evening.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Thanks for having us tonight. So we are here again for a budget engagement session. We do this at the beginning of every budget cycle. I think this is maybe the third in row, third or fourth. Tonight, it's going to be a group, a group effort to present this to you. So still waiting for it to come up. Okay, thanks. So as Oscar's bringing that up, tonight, we're going to be prevent, presenting an overview of the city's budget process, highlights of our current budget. And then we'll share the results of the Quality of Life Master Plan survey that you all participated in. And it's a good segue from the item that we just saw. So you're very familiar now with the Q L M P and we will talk about that shortly. So the budget team consists of myself, Assistant Director Ward Comers, Paula Majors, who's our fiscal services manager, and she primarily focuses on the coordination of the C I P, the Capital Improvement Program budget. And then Catlin Dorsett, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, she focuses on the annual operating budget coordination. So our budget process begins each year in the January timeframe where we update our current year budget. We look at revenues, make sure that everything is trending according to what we planned. And if not, we make those adjustments. And then we do a preliminary five-year projection. And that five-year serves as sort of the foundation and the baseline for doing the next fiscal year's budget, which we start in February by meeting with departments. We go over their, their variety of requests. And then we also bring the mid-year budget update to council and keep them apprised of how we're looking on our budget. During March, we do the budget engagement sessions. And then we conduct all the different meetings with departments to review their budget requests. And then we prepare from that, we prepare a preliminary budget, that's reviewed with the city manager. And then his recommendations are presented in what we call the proposed budget. And the proposed budget is developed in April and it's presented to the city council at their budget workshop in May. And then typically in June is when the council adopts the final budgets. This year, it's going to happen to be at the last meeting in May due to scheduling, but typically that's the first meeting in June. And then when staff is developing its appropriation recommendations or its budget recommendations, we utilize a lot of different feedback to incorporate into our recommendations, one of which is the Q L M P, which we just got a briefing on. And then all the feedback that we get from our presentations with the commissions, we incorporate that into our recommendations. And then if there's any prior year carryovers, so this is where programs or projects may have been started in a previous fiscal year, not quite complete, we first want to make sure that we carry over that budget so that those projects can come to completion. And then we utilize inputs from the various master plans the city has. And then definitely council policies influence our budget recommendations as well. So I'll turn it over to Paula Majors, who's going to walk you through the C I P highlights.
I am Paula Majors. Good evening, commissioners. The Capital Improvement Program is a comprehensive five-year plan that addresses the capital needs of the city. Capital projects are those that cost over thirty thousand, have long-term lifespans and are generally non-recurring. The fiscal year's twenty-four through twenty-eight C I P is the largest in the city's history with eight hundred and nineteen million in total cost. The city has identified funding sources totaling six hundred and six million, or seventy-four percent of the total C I P. The remaining two hundred and thirteen million is unspecified at this time. However, before construction begins on any of these projects, a funding source will be identified. This evening, we would like to highlight a few of our C I P projects. French Valley Parkway Phase Two. This one hundred and thirty-eight million dollar project is currently under construction and is estimated to be completed in May twenty twenty-five. This project will alleviate the bottleneck on northbound I fifteen between Winchester Road and the I two fifteen junction. The Los Haciendas Affordable Housing Project is located off Jefferson Avenue, includes the construction of a seventy-seven unit affordable multifamily housing community. The project includes ten million in city funding. All units are leased for Buildings One and Two, and building occupancy has begun for Building One. Construction on the I fifteen Congestion Relief Project, a nine point two million dollar auxiliary lane between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road, is scheduled to begin soon and is expected to be complete in October twenty twenty-four. At the meeting of the two twenty-nine twenty-four council, approved the authorization to solicit construction bids for the Pickleball Courts project, which includes seventeen dedicated courts located at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The three point three million dollar project is estimated to take approximately four months to complete. The Ronald Reagan Sports Park Hockey Rink is a two million dollar project that recently went to bid and is being evaluated by Public Works. The project will include a complete renovation of the hockey rink to install new flooring material and roof structure, bleachers and various ADA compliant improvements. I'd like to turn the presentation over to our Director of Finance, Jennifer Hennessy, who will discuss the city's annual operating budget and the debt liability paydown status.
Thank you, Paul.
All righty. So as you know, the city follows fund accounting principles, which requires revenues and expenditures to be tracked in separate and distinct funds. While the city maintains over seventy individual funds, tonight we'll focus on its primary operating funds. The city's general fund is the primary operating fund for the city and its revenues are unrestricted so long as they're spent for a public purpose. The general fund revenue for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four is just over one hundred and eight million dollars, but is decreasing from the prior year by six point three percent. Most of the revenue is derived from sales tax, which fluctuates with the economy. Twenty-eight percent of sales tax revenue comes from the auto sector alone. So with rising interest rates and the number of auto sales has decreased in recent years, and nearly all sectors of the economy are showing signs of a decrease from the prior year currently. The license and permits category also shows a decline as development activity within the city has slowed down. Overall, we keep a close eye on economic indicators and address revenue projections accordingly. The general fund supports the majority of the operations of the city with a total budget of ninety-six point four million for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. A little over half is dedicated to public safety with a police budget of forty-one point seven million. And the city's portion of the fire budget is eleven point seven million. An additional eleven million is provided through the county's structural fire tax for a total fire budget of nearly twenty-three million dollars. Administration includes the city council, city manager's office, city attorney, city clerk, finance and H R departments. And Public Works makes up twenty-one percent of the budget, while community development totals nine percent. And the non-departmental category shows a decrease due to the anticipated savings we'll achieve through the paydown of our pension liability. This chart shows the general fund revenues over expenditures and it shows a ten-year trend. Revenues are shown in the green line and they exceed the expenditures each and every year, indicating that the general fund is structurally balanced throughout the five-year forecast. This chart shows the trend in fund balance, which is the cumulative difference between revenues over expenditures. Per budget policy, the city shall keep twenty-five percent of its operating expenditures set aside for emergency purposes. The blue bars on this chart show the fund balance and the yellow diamonds show the desired emergency reserve levels. The general fund balance is expected to fully fund the twenty-five percent emergency reserve each and every year. The excess fund balance over the reserve requirement has steadily declined since twenty-one twenty-two as it's been strategically used to pay down the city's debt. The second, the city's second largest unrestricted fund is the Measure S Fund. And Measure S is the one cent sales tax that was approved by voters back in twenty sixteen and it's tracked in its own fund for transparency purposes. For fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, the Measure S revenue is projected to be just under forty million dollars and it's increasing slightly over the prior year, but mostly due to interest earnings. After Measure S was approved, the council at the time adopted the Measure S appropriation guidelines, which prioritize the use of these tax dollars. The first priority is to ensure public safety staffing levels keep pace with population growth. The five point four million dedicated to public safety reflects the cost of eleven police officers, staffing for Fire Station ninety-five and the future replacement of the recently acquired fire ladder truck. These funds are transferred to the general fund to support both the police and fire budgets. The second priority for Measure S is to fund the asset management program, which is essentially several reserve funds or savings accounts established to provide the necessary funding to replace the city's assets when they reach the end of their useful life. We have replacement funds set up for technology, fleet, facilities, copiers and street maintenance. Capital project funding is the third priority, although based on the pie chart, it has the largest allocation of funding. This is due to carryovers from prior year budgets as capital projects often take several years to complete. And then the funding necessary to maintain our community services operations is the final priority and currently twenty percent of Measure S is transferred to the T C S D budget for this purpose. So the T C S D, or the Community Services District, is technically a separate legal entity than the city and has a separate budget altogether. And includes the T C S D operations, the library and various service levels. The T C S D operations revenue is projected to total seventeen point nine million, of which seventy-four percent is supported by the measure, by Measure S. Measure C is the seventy-four dollars and forty-four cent parcel tax that was approved back in nineteen ninety-seven and that provides just under two million dollars for T C S D. And finally, program revenue of two point eight million includes fees received for aquatics lessons, theater tickets, day camp, contract classes, sports and facility rentals. The T C S D operations budget for twenty-three twenty-four totals nearly eighteen point eight million and is broken into several different divisions. and is broken into several different divisions, as shown here. And the operations division is the largest at four-and-a-half million dollars because it includes the internal service fund allocation for all of the divisions in T C S D, and that allocation makes up about half of that four-point-five-million-dollar budget. Okay, on to the debt paydown strategy. So you may recall back in December of twenty-two, the council adopted the city's debt liability paydown strategy, whereby the city would pay down all of its facility debt and unfunded liabilities over a seven-year period. To date, we have paid off two of the facility loans. Twelve-point-six million for the Civic Center and five million for the Margarita Rec Center. Both of those have been paid in full. And then the O P E B liability, which is the other post-employment benefits, or also called retiree health benefit. That unfunded liability has also been paid in full. Originally, when we created the plan, the liability was just over five million dollars, but through an updated valuation report we received from our consultants, that liability dropped down to three-point-two, so we quickly paid that off. And then we have the pension liability. So this is the future benefits costs that are related to employees' CalPERS retirement. And again, when the paydown strategy was adopted, the unfunded liability for the pension was fifty-two million dollars. However, with the updated valuation report, it grew up to almost sixty-two million dollars. So this liability is revalued every year, and it's going to fluctuate based on several different factors, primarily the CalPERS investment returns, the city's payroll costs, and employee mortality rates. And to date, we have paid off, oops, we've paid off twenty-two million. Oh, I'm sorry, I messed up. We paid off twenty-two million of the liability. And then over the next five years, included in our five-year forecast as well, are the remaining payoffs to reach the seven-year payoff goal. Once the liability is paid off in full, the city will save between five to six million dollars a year in its operating budget, and will have saved over thirty million dollars in interest cost from the pension alone.
So I will now turn it over to Assistant Director Ward Comers, who's going to walk you through the results of the Q L M P survey.
Welcome, Ward.
Thank you. Get adjusted here. Thank you, Commissioners. Ward Comers, Assistant Finance Director. This is the portion of my presentation where I normally say something witty, but I ran out of wit yesterday, so... We're just gonna have to go through it, sorry.
We'll come up something for you.
Okay, good. Sounds good. So this first slide, what is the Q L M P? I'm going to skip this because we had an excellent presentation before that went over all these things. But, and you're familiar with them all anyway, so... But the key portions here are that the, all the departments within the city have performance measures linked to goals that are laid out in the Q L M P. And then also, every capital improvement project links to a goal in the Q L M P. The seven core values are here. Again, I won't go over these, but they're there just as a reminder. So this year, as part of the budget process, we wanted to ask each of the city's commissions to provide feedback on prioritizing the goals that are laid out in the Q L M P. We have surveyed the four commissions, Community Services, Traffic Safety, Planning, and Ready. Talked about the goals for twenty forty. Also, in the survey, we included the citizens' twenty-year priority timeline. So in the Q L M P document, there's fifty-one capital improvement projects that are identified. Sixteen of those projects are, have not been planned yet, so we wanted to get some feedback about prioritizing those. And then we will share the results of the survey with the city council at some point in the future. So getting into the results of the survey, Core Value One is a safe and prepared community. On the left-hand side, you can see the goals for twenty forty. And then on the right-hand side now, you can see the survey results. So ensuring that funding for public safety, that came in as a top priority, survey-wide. The second priority is to continue to be one of the safest cities in California. And then you can see the rest down. The results of the planning commission itself are in the orange Xs. So you can see that very similar to survey-wide results. There's a little bit of difference there in the second priority, which is being one of the safest. So that's Core Value One. Core Value Two, Transportation, Mobility, and Connectivity. The goals for twenty forty are on the left-hand side. Survey results are on the right. The top priority is maintain and improve roadway network. Second priority is to promote job growth. Planning Commission survey results are there, very close to the survey average. So that's Core Value Two. Core Value Three, Healthy and Livable City. The survey, or excuse me, the goals are on the left. Survey results are on the right. So the top goal is supporting healthy and active lifestyles. The second goal there is be a sustainable community that embraces quality of life. Planning Commission results, again, very similar. Looks like the third one from the bottom there is a little bit different than the survey. And so probably the third one from the bottom and the bottom one looks like they would be in a little bit different order if we were just looking at the Planning Commission. Next, Core Value Number Four, Economic Prosperity Goals for twenty forty. The goals are on the left. Survey results are on the right. Top goals encourage the broadening of higher education. Second is provide entrepreneurial culture. Planning Commission results, very similar. Core Value Number Five, Sustainable and Resilient City. The goals are on the left. Survey results are on the right. Top goals, ensure safe and sufficient water supplies. The second goal is be most sustainable city in Southern California. The Planning Commission results, very similar. It looks like we'd have a swapping of the third from the bottom and the second from the bottom. Maybe a three-way tie for the Planning Commission, actually, for top priority. Core Value Number Six, Accountable and Responsive City. Goals are on the left. Results are on the right. So the top goal is provide consistently professional services. Second is maintain a flexible organization. Planning Commission results, clear winner for the Planning Commission, which would be providing highest quality of service. But the rest are very similar. Core Value Number Seven, Equity Goals. Goals are on the left. Results are on the right. Top goal is support and fair and equitable treatment of all human beings. Second is foster healthy environment. Planning Commission results are there. A little bit different priority there. Moving on to the citizens' twenty-year priority timeline, or the future projects, the top five. The sixteen projects are on the left-hand side, C I P projects, that remain to be planned. Are on the left. The priorities are on the right. So the, we have a two-way tie for the top position, which is Murdeta Creek Bridge and Fire Station Twelve. And then there's a four-way tie for second. Western Bypass Corridor, South Side Senior Center, Climate Action Plan, complete the Temecula Loop Trail. Planning Commission results are different, and that's good. So Planning Commission has a two-way tie for first, which is Western Bypass Corridor and then the aquatics facility. And then there is a six-way tie for second. Temecula Loop Trail, Watershed Management Plan, Fire Training Facility, Parking Structure, Performing Arts Center, and then New Tennis Complex. And that completes my portion of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the funny part of what you said was, "Survey results are." I felt like I was on that game. What is that game? Family Feud. Family Feud. That was awesome.
Okay, so in closing, we want to thank you all for your participation in the survey, as well as the other Commissioners. And as Ward mentioned, we will be summarizing this and providing it to the council as part of their budget workshop. And we are open for any questions, or if you want to review any of the prior slides, just let me know, and I can rewind. But we will, we're open for questions now, so thank you.
Go ahead. No, thank you for that. I really liked seeing everything that, you know, the city does accomplish. I think, you know, paying off some of the debt, or almost all the debt, is a tremendous, you know, kudos to everybody. I don't know many cities that are our size with everything that we offer that can, that can say that. So I definitely want to lead off with that. I did have one question on the, when you were going over the revenues and expenditures, the comparison from year to year. There was a significant difference in, I think it was just "other," from last year fiscal year to this year fiscal year. And I, I mean, the pressure, or assume maybe, is that just one-time funding, like ARPA funding or something like that?
I believe it was. Yeah, I believe the, in the prior years, when we received the last installment of our ARPA funds, which was seven million dollars, and then we did not receive that this year. So most likely, that was the difference between those two.
Yeah, you covered most of the other drastic changes. That one just wasn't, but that's what I assumed it was. So thanks for the clarification.
Thanks.
Thank you for the presentation. I also wanted to look at, I think it was Paula's first slide that we didn't really get to look at. See if I missed anything there.
Yeah. She verbally summarized it, but we can take a look at the, at the slide itself. There's probably a much faster way to get there, huh? Okay, there we are. Oh, he's not showing it. There we go. So that's a summary of basically the entire C I P program.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at, like, the ratio. Awesome. Okay, and I also, you know, my favorite part of this is that we are not in the red at all and that we save for that rainy day. And I think that's so important, obviously, personally and as a city. And I think, I think we're, as a city, being a good example for our residents in that way. And we would hope residents would do the same. And the general fund being structurally balanced, love that. So really, I just think, and I love that we have this opportunity. I've been on here a long time, and we haven't always had this opportunity. So I do appreciate that very much and hope that we continue to be able to do that. So thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry. Since I am a Q L M P person, I have to say something. Yeah, I thought that was really interesting, right? And seeing different commissions and what their priorities were. And it just really kind of totally made sense that Planning Commission had the priorities they did. It was really pretty interesting to me. So that was, that was something new, obviously, because we didn't have the Q L M P before. So I really appreciated that. Thank you.
Great job, as usual, as I think last year I told you. And I want to jump on the same comments. My colleague said, "The city's fantastic considering the budget, the overall budget is over seven-hundred million dollars." Unbelievable for a town or a city our size. So you're a management of the fiscal resources, should be commended, Jennifer, as a resident and a Commissioner. I want to personally thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
And I will push for my usual contribution to your invitation for feedback, but let's keep buying parkland, and let's plant trees on them this time. Okay? Thank you.
I'd like to also thank staff and yourself for all the hard work in organizing the budget the way that staff has for the last couple of years, and how we're meeting our future goal to be debt-free, and that's big. And also, as I drive around the city, there's always new projects, and we can see them. And I like how everything is posted, so the community knows what's going on, and they see that the city's doing a lot. So that's great work. Thank you.
Thanks.
So it was one thing in there that did surprise me was the revenue related to sales tax and, and the Measure S. That, the sales tax, I think, was going down point-one percent, and the Measure S was going down five-point-six percent. And I found that kind of weird because they're based off, I think, a very similar sales base, or not the same, probably, but similar sales base.
The Measure S number, so this one, it's actually going up a slight bit. But that number up there includes two components. It includes the Measure S sales tax revenue and interest earnings on that fund.
Oh, okay.
So interest is actually going up because we are seeing, you know, better investment returns. But the Measure S component itself does track pretty closely to sales tax, and they both are, they are both kind of down this year.
I would expect that we don't receive Measure S funds on, or tax related to online sales, that we just get a portion of the, the county collects, and that would, well, I'm guessing that that one percent is not taxed in there that, like Amazon, for instance, can identify that it's Temecula and puts the Measure S on there.
The, the online sales are handled differently than, than all the other
Right.
regular brick-and-mortar type of sales, and those go through, they get funneled through a county pool. And you're right, that only really hits the, the sales tax side and not the Measure S side.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
So I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have been working on the pickleball courts for a very long time, a big group of people. And, and I originally came in and talked, just because there was such a, such a need for it with people. And, and, you know, one of most important things to me and to a lot of people is that we have a healthy, livable city, right? And that there's active things for people to do. I think that keeps a lot of kids out of trouble, all of that kind of thing, even adults out of trouble, right? We do have adults who like to get in trouble. And so I appreciate the fact that the city, even though it's taken a lot of years, that, and also with the skate park, right? I saw that process go through. And I think that there are, there are things that are really important in the city, and I think that the city listens to that and looks at the evidence of that. And I think that that's great. I mean, we've worked on having the bike trail all the way through the city, which I also think helps with having a city that you don't have to drive all the time, that you can ride your bike or whatever, and we're working on that. So I think those kind of things, for me, are a priority of making the city as healthy and livable as we can and active and family-friendly. And all of those things do that. So thank you.
So I just wanted to say that it's extra special to be part of a city that manages its, its money so well. And I wish our residents and others around could understand how well we really do. Several of us were just at a League of Cities event and got to talk to a lot of other cities. And when you do talk to them, it really becomes even more outstanding in our minds how well we manage things here and how good we have it here. So I retired a couple of years ago, and I had a lot of people come up to me and ask me where I'm moving to in retirement. And I tell them all the same thing, which is, "I already moved here." So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yes, have a good evening.
Okay, so we're moving to the final parts here, and we'll have Commissioner Reports. We'll start down with Commissioner Solis.
All right.
Solis.
Solis. Solis. Okay, well, I'd like to thank the city for allowing us to go to the League of Cities, the conference. It was really good. Like, last year, I learned a lot. They brought up the new Senate bills that are coming up. We also got to meet our neighboring commissioners in other cities. Got to talk to them about what projects they have going on in their cities and, and also, you know, just, just, just learning new things. So... just learning new things, so when we're, we're more prepared is when we come here and make decisions. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the support, going to the academy. It was, it was very productive, and to learn about other cities that have 11-member planning commissions and nine-member planning commissions with alternates that have to attend, I said, "Boy, thank goodness, we're from Temecula." One thing I took away from the conference, which is very interesting, there are, well, I forget the exact number, but I believe you said 5,300 and some. Brand-new bills were introduced in the California Legislature for this year and have to be decided on before July. 5,000. So I didn't realize there were that kind of need for that many laws in the state, but apparently there are, so I'm sure a lot of them are going to affect us on this commission when it comes to housing and other things, so they're working up there, I guess. So anyhow, thanks again. It was a very productive conference, and sometimes people have questions about Temecula that are different than you'd expect, and sometimes it's very predictable, but overall, I'd say that we stand pretty in high stead with, with our compatriots over in other cities, and learned a lot from having just form, or informal conversations over coffee, or over lunch, or breaks, or something of that nature, so hope you continue to support those efforts, because I think they are, they are very beneficial, and it proved this case that we had four of our commissioners were lucky enough to be able to attend, and a lot of cities, we're lucky to send one. So, thanks.
Go ahead.
So, I unfortunately wasn't able to go, but I, but I'm, but I'm going to brag about something real quick that I had planned. So one of my work colleagues called me up and just said, "Hey," they attended, he attended one of the planning commissions up in his area, and objective, objective design standards was brought up, Temecula was used as a, as a model that they kind of referenced out, so he was asking me for some information. I was able to get him initially connected with Luke, and then ultimately Matt spent a good 30, 40 minutes on Zoom with him, give him the background, and it's kind of nice to sit there and listen and help me understand that a little bit better, number one, but number two, just kind of be a little, a little prideful to be on this side of it, not only working with the city, but now from a, the commission standpoint, and see him taking notes. He called me after and said it was a tremendous help, as they're starting to look at their ordinances. So just kind of a nice bragging moment for us to be modeled by another city, and then I wanted to recognize and appreciate Matt for taking the time to, to meet with us and share that information, it was very much appreciated.
Awesome, that is cool. So I too want to thank the city for giving us that opportunity. One thing I do miss is, one of my first conferences I went to, we had planners there, we had our people there, and I felt like, I know this is a planning commission kind of conference, but there were a lot of planners there, there were directors there, and I don't know how that would work, but I feel like, when I first came on, like, the very, one, first conference I went to, we were able to sit around with those planners in a different environment, where we could really talk about things, and, and it was really valuable. So, just food for thought.
Can I ask a question? Was that the Planning Commissioners Academy, or was that the annual State APA conference? Because prior to 2020, everything changed over 2020, right? But prior to that, we, we would, the staff would go to the APA, wherever that was in the state, and then a lot of times the planning commissioners would come along with us, so...
Well, I know they had Planning Commission 101 at that conference, so I'm not sure they would have that with the APA, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, so the APA is always in September-ish timeframe.
Yeah, it could have been, could have been.
We can look at doing that again this year. It's in Riverside, actually, this year, so, first time ever, so it is local. We can look into having planning commission come to that as well, and going forward, just re-initiate that. We didn't, I don't, we'll have to go look at the budget, I don't know what we budgeted for this year in terms of that, but...
Yeah, just a suggestion, because I know there were planners there and directors there, and I, you know, it's just, I remember that being so great, like, I really liked that part of it, being able to do that, and since then, you know, we haven't had that opportunity just that one time. So that was just a suggestion, and, and actually, this year, they had a couple of sessions where we could actually do our ethics, which I know some of us had already done it, but that was a beautiful thing, can I just say, because I hadn't done it yet, and it was a lot more interesting than doing it online. And then I also mentioned this at the city council meeting, but I want to reiterate it for anyone who didn't hear, is that I did get up and speak about our joint meetings with city council, our planning commission and city council, and I do think that they, the two that we've had have been extremely valuable, and I would hope that we could continue those as needed. So just want to put a plug in for that. And, and my takeaway was probably what I learned the most is from the question-and-answer sessions that they have after the actual, you know, meeting substance, I guess, the presentation, is that's when you really hear from people in their cities and what they're dealing with, and their questions, which a lot of them are very different questions than we have in our city, but it kind of gives you a feel for those cities, and I think that you learn a lot from that. So for me, that's where I learn the most, is from the question-and-answer part, so thank you, appreciate that. Thanks Denise for organizing that, appreciate that.
So, Commissioner Solis and I had breakfast with several of the commissioners, several of the nine commissioners from Bakersfield, and the, the director of planning, and he asked me where the, our director of planning was. I said, "Well, he didn't need to come, he trusts us." So, he said, "Well, you know, I'm not here, I, I trust them, I'm just here to bond with them." I said, "Well, we, we have dinner, you know, beforehand, and we do all our bonding then, and it's, it's really good." And he was very interested, so he decided that they were going to have dinner before their meetings as well now, so. What I got out of this, there was a particular session that I thought was really, really good, that was a relationship between planning commission, city council, and staff, and they went through in detail how a plan gets from the front desk with somebody filling out an application, to all the different steps until it gets here, and it was, you know, I knew there was a lot, but it's really an eye-opener, and it really helped us really appreciate all the things that our staff does, and it's amazing that some of the things ever, actually even ever get here, so. And I think something else I got out of it was how many applications get signed and never make it here. So what we see is a very small part of applications, and some, some, you know, they fill out, sign, and you never see them again, some get halfway through, some get almost to the hearing, and, and they never, they don't, you know, then it's canceled, and there's some that even get to us that we never see get built. We've seen a couple of those in the last couple of years. So it's, it's really amazing how much goes on behind the scenes. The other thing that I really got a lot out of was that there's over 100 bills that have, that are now law, that regulate how we do our job, basically, and how complex it is, and how some of them have lots of conflicts built within them, that, you know, sometimes I'm not sure how you can make a decision, because one thing's saying you have to do it this way, and another thing's saying you have to do it that way. And I think we went through a session where we are seeing what's coming up, and I think we're going to see a lot more of those conflicts than we have in the past even, so...
That's okay, though, because that's what we have Maricela for.
Yeah, that's...
She's here to guide us through all those challenges.
So there was one bill that, there was a lot of smiles, and it was from Kelly Ciarto, and then unfortunately it became a big frown, because we were told it will never see the light of day, because it made too much sense, and what I, what stood out really for me was, his bill was to allow a city that meets their, their housing, their RENA requirements to carry over to the next cycle. And there are three or four cities in the state that have exceeded their, their RENA requirements, and holding out a carrot to, to encourage cities to be able to do that. But all the other bills that were up there was in a punishing mode. It's, "If you don't, this is what we do to you." And it really made, it really stand out what Kelly is trying to, trying to do, and I know, I saw a bill that, that he's proposing this morning that got killed as well, that again was holding carrots out rather than taking a whip and beating us. So, it was, it was a very, very good conference, and as everyone else has said, you know, you get a lot out of just meeting all the other cities and seeing what, you know, what they go through and the kind of issues, and it's interesting how different our issues are than many other cities, that some of the things that we've had to deal, deal with, I couldn't find another city that, that dealt with them. So, so we really appreciate that. The other, the last thing, I did attend a RCTC meeting last Thursday evening on the smart freeways, and I think it's going to be very interesting. Hopefully, they're able to put the meters in and all the sensors in prior to us finishing the work on the freeway, so that we have some basis to measure and see how much, you know, that will help us see how much traffic is improved by the work that's being done, the $100 million that's being, being spent. One thing I did suggest to them, that they said was not possible with the software that they have, is to be able to tie it in to our traffic system, so that when freeways are particularly backed up and you can't get on the freeway, that we allow our lights to be able to allow traffic within the city, to particularly like places like Jefferson, it's right along the freeway, be able to move smoother. So they, they took that under consideration, they said that will be something they will look for in the software that they update to after the two-year program. But it's, I think we've got as much effort going on trying to free up our freeway as, I think, as humanly possible, so it should be interesting to see how we, how we progress. Okay, subcommittees, I do hear that we had a subcommittee.
We did have a subcommittee meeting, and Gary, go ahead and chime in if there's anything I, I missed on this, but this subcommittee, Gary and I met with staff on the Temecula Resort and Spa, and so we're still working on things, they're still working on things, and, you know, we still have some concerns there that should maybe be coming back to us in May, is what I heard, so stay tuned. Did you have anything, Gary?
No, that's perfect.
Okay, thanks.
No, that was perfect, and I'm relieved that there's two less bills I have to worry about now before the end of the fiscal year. Even though they are good bills, it's two out of the 5,300, so we're making progress.
Anybody else? No other subcommittees? Okay, we'll go on to the Community Development Director's Report.
So last week, Commissioner Watts was in and asked me for an update on a couple of items. One of those was shopping carts. So the city council adopted a shopping cart ordinance that the planning commission recommended for approval, and that was in July of '22, and it required locking mechanisms for the shopping carts, so homeless couldn't take them off-site. Our staff, there are 82 businesses in the city of Temecula, our staff visited each one before the ordinance was adopted and then after, and met with general managers, hand-delivered, and we've had pretty good compliance with the shopping cart ordinance. There are a few problem chains or corporations that we're well aware of, I won't name names, but we're working on crafting a letter to their legal departments and their corporations before we begin our sweeps with code enforcement. So hopefully you should see some of those issues a little more well-contained in the city.
Can I ask a question really quick? Just a general, non-scientific survey. Maybe you haven't noticed actively, but if you can think, have you seen less carts around town? Have you noticed that at all?
Yes.
Yes. I've seen a lot of the unnamed chains and that type of thing, so I just, it's sort of, I know Matt looked at me quizzically, but it sort of gets back to my whole philosophy of, if we're going to pass regulations and laws and that type of thing and ordinances, then let's mean it, that's all. And so I just was curious, because we had done that quite a long time ago, and I realized there's a grace period and that type of thing in education and all. So I was just asking, you know, when we do have these types of things come up, just a periodic update would help us, I think, understand whether, you know, whether we're doing the right thing or whether we're not, maybe going down the wrong track, and that's all. The other item I, I had mentioned to you was the closed drop-off boxes.
Yeah, so the, the drop boxes, those seem to pop up randomly, and in a number of our shopping centers. So the drop boxes are for clothing or phone exchange, some different things, and I think in the last two weekends, we, we've seen a number of those kind of pop up, and code enforcement has gone out and taken care of them right away. As far as our ordinance goes, to do a drop box, you'd have to do a temporary use permit, we do address it in the development code, but we require that the drop box is within 20 feet of the entrance and a certain size. So rather than these large, what do you call them, like, like you see in Long Beach, the, you know, the containers, the large containers.
Closed bins, yeah.
Yeah, those bins, it, it would be something more manageable and near the entrance, and requiring it by the entrance means that the business knows that they're there. So if you see them, use the city app to report, and it'll be proactively addressed through code enforcement.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, for following up, and, and for the rest of the commissioners, I just felt like every once in a while, it's nice to get a report back on, on things that we've done, so it's not acting, asking for a lot of workload, especially in this case, it's code enforcement that's responsible for that, not planning or community development, so, but it was implemented through us, so I, I've, I've felt like, once in a while, it's nice to get feedback on whether, you know, what we did is working or whether it wasn't working, and maybe we can go back and address that, that's all. Thank you, Matt, for following up on that, I appreciate it.
So, actually, it's funny, yesterday my wife and I were talking about the shopping cart ordinance, and she brought up that she noticed that, I won't mention a store name, but most of the, several of the hobby stores and those type of stores had carts that already complied, but there was one that had not, and they have now, as of, you know, a week or two ago, complied. What I've recognized is that the ones that are not in compliance are typically the food stores that are the big chain ones, and I know it's a lot more difficult and expensive for them, but that's where I think probably the shopping carts that I see out there, which is certainly a lot fewer than I used to see, is probably their shopping carts, at least from the logos that I can see. So, okay. Anything else? We're good? Okay, we'll go on to the Public Works Director's Report.
Very brief, because Lynae asked, I checked into it really quick. Pachanga Parkway has been down to just one lane, it's a double-lane closure that's been during the day this week, and that is because Pachanga, the tribe, is putting in a master-planned reclaimed water system in conjunction with RCWD. That project's actually going to kick off in June, but as part of that, they've been having to do some potholing of utilities and checking all the potholing status and, you know, what heights and elevations these other utilities are. So they've been doing that this week, which should wrap up this week. Then you'll have a little reprieve, but then Pachanga Parkway will get impacted in June again, so that's what's... So that's what's going on. We kicked off our I-15 auxiliary lane congestion relief project. Not just groundbreaking, but if you look on the freeway now, there's K-rail set up. So I was driving past it the day before yesterday. You know, so they've got the shoulder put off. I saw the survey crews out there, so that's going in full force. And then lastly, we did put out to bid because it came up on the budget tonight. The pickleball is out to bid right now for construction. So that's on Planet Bids. Plans and specs were uploaded. So that's, that'll go on for the next couple of weeks.
What's going on in, in front of Longhorn Steakhouse?
That's a gas project. The gas company is doing some improvements over there. And so they needed to put in some protection down there. And so they've been working on that.
Okay.
And what about on Margarita, between Overland and Winchester? The last couple of days, it looked like they were maybe working on some trees or something out in front. But I was, I was actually stuck in that today. I turned off of Overland on the Margarita without realizing I was going to be stuck. I had to wait to get to the mall and kind of go through. But there's still just stop signs and lights out there. Do you know what that's going to get?
That's a rough one. It'll be over with here pretty soon, in the next couple of days. But whenever our contractors, our landscaper contractor is out there, because we don't want to block the sidewalk for pedestrian use, they can't be up on there because there's that slope. And so they have to take the lane and that makes it really difficult. And, and we know Margarita is already, at that time of day, a nightmare. So it's, it's making it doubly worse.
Couple more days, though?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we will adjourn to, let's see, April 3rd.